Before we get started, we had some wonderful greeters out front that I'd love to have come up and tell us who they are and what school they're from and what they have going on as they headed towards the break next week. What's been going on that's exciting? Any committees you're on or things you're involved in would be great.
Hi, my name is Macy Lynn. We're all from Bonnie Lake, so I'll just put that out there. I'm ASB Vice President this year.
Hi, my name is Wanya. I'm a junior and I'm ASB's Financial Secretary. I'm involved in API, obviously ASB, Panther Crew, DECA, and a couple other things, but yeah.
My name is Emmeline Childress. I am Bonnie Lake High School's ASB Treasurer, so I do a lot of things with money and I, you know, little money gal. And I participate in DECA, I do Panther Crew and Key Club.
Hi, I'm Ada Howard. I'm a junior at Bonnie Lake. I'm in ASB. I'm just a coordinator. And I'm in DECA. I do choir, girls lacrosse, and a couple other things.
My name is Simon. Simon Cabran. I am the ASB Secretary of Activities. I also participate in DECA, NHS, Key Club, a variety of sports, including tennis and track, and yeah.
Thank you so much for being here. I really appreciate it. Are you taking the mic because you wanted to add anything? No, you just like go. Yeah, totally understand.
You guys can go. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much for being here. Appreciate it. All right, first order of business is the approval of the agenda. The administration recommends that the Board of Directors approve the November 18th, 2025 Board Meeting Agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Oh, two seconds. Awesome. All right, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, we've got our consent items to take care of. The administration recommends that the Board of Directors approve the consent agenda items for November 18th, 2025 Board Meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Oh.
Okay, any discussion? Is your microphone on? Turn it on. A big thank you for the donation from Local 23. Yeah, Longshore. Awesome. Yeah, that was very nice of them. I like the MOU for the bus drivers. Thank you to the district for putting out incentives to try and encourage more bus drivers to apply and retain the jobs. So I think that's a pretty cool incentive to put out there and hopefully get us some more bus drivers and take care of all those routes. All right, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, we have some recognition to do tonight?
We do. It's my pleasure to introduce Principal Leanne Alfonso from Bonnie Lake Elementary, who is here to introduce a very special crew of incredible students. So Principal Leanne Alfonso.
Hi, Board. Thank you for inviting us here tonight. I have a very excited group of students here from Bonnie Lake Elementary. They are part of our National Elementary Honor Society. We are the one school in the district that has an honor society and we're pretty excited about that. It's our leadership program at Bonnie Lake Elementary. And this is the Kindness Crew. So I would like to introduce their advisor, fourth grade teacher extraordinaire and nationally board certified teacher, Dawn Isaacson. I am privileged to be with these students here. This is our Kindness Crew and you've already introduced everything I was going to say, so we're good. On the board, you can see that we have a bigger group. Some of our kids couldn't make it today, so we'll be including them in our presentation. So I'm going to turn it over to my friends if you want to come up and introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Merrick and I'm in fifth grade.
Hi, my name is Charlotte and I'm in the fourth grade.
Hi, my name is Natalie and I'm in the fourth grade.
Hi, my name is Hi, my name is Arla and I'm also in the first grade.
Hi, my name is Lillian and I'm in fifth grade.
Hi, my name is Heidi and I'm in fifth grade.
Hi, my name is Sydney and I'm in fifth grade.
Hi, my name is Bailey and I'm in the fifth grade.
Nice job, guys. One of the big things this year is how we got started. This summer, we went to the Purposeful People Training with my school and heard some things about kindness crews around the country. And I thought this would be a great thing for our National Elementary Honor Society. But these guys are going to explain how it's a little bit different and a little bit about them.
The big difference is that while NEHS members apply and interview for their roles, the kindness crew is completely voluntary. Anyone who wants to help spread kindness can join. They meet to come up with creative ways to make our school and our community a little brighter and a little kinder. It's a great reminder that you don't need a title or position to be a leader. You just need a caring heart and the willingness to make a difference.
The Kindness Crew was created to inspire all of us to spread kindness and care throughout our school and community. The mission is simple but powerful, to notice the good, to lift it up, and to remind us that even small acts of kindness can have a big impact.
From writing a kind note, helping classmates and teachers, to organizing projects that make our community shine, the Kindness Crew shows that everyone, one of us, has the power to make a difference just by choosing to be kind.
The first big idea the Kindness Crew tackled was this, how can we share kindness with others?
There are three big events that we have been focusing on. Working together with our NEHS announcement team, they came up with kindness challenges, fun ways to spread positivity around our school. Every Thursday during announcements, they share a new challenge, things like smiling at five new people or making a kindness link at recess to show how small acts can connect us all.
It's amazing to see students getting excited about kindness and realizing that even the smallest actions can brighten someone's day.
The Kindness Crew celebrated World Kindness Day by spreading smiles and positivity all around our school. They met ahead of time to create kindness notes and place them throughout the building for students and staff to find. During the day, crew members handed out kindness cards wherever they spotted someone doing something kind. At recess, they set up kindness grams table where students could send messages to friends, teachers, or staff.
Our K2 students even got a little extra help from the Kindness Crew members who wrote down their sweet messages for them. It was a day filled with laughter, gratitude, and lots of kindness spreading across BLE.
The Kindness Crew is continuing to grow our culture of caring through a new project called Change for Change. Once a month, the Kindness Crew partners with our PTA to collect loose change from students and staff in our car loop in the morning.
At the end of the year, all BLE students will have the opportunity to vote on a local cause or organization to receive the donation. It's a simple but powerful way for students to experience the joy of giving, showing kindness to others and even those they may never meet.
But we are not stopping there. We have more things planned for BLE.
We have been working to continue to spread kindness at BLE. We will continue to meet once a month to brainstorm our ideas or use the time to create supplies for our special themes.
We are continuing our weekly kindness challenge announcements and will use our meeting in December to create holiday cards to drop off at senior centers or retirement homes.
Our goal is to grow kindness at BLE and within our community.
Thank you for inviting us in today. We also want to thank our adult helpers in the audience. Would you please stand adult kindness crew members?
Thank you.
Before you sit down, I've got a little token appreciation for me up here. I carve these, strong hearts, kind hearts, strong minds. I want you to have one of these.
Thank you so much. Can I hug you? And we're not going to let you sit down just yet. Because what I want you to know is everything that they've just told you is true and more. They, and what Dawn just did is exactly what she does in her classroom. It's all about these kids. I mean, she creates this environment where they can practice kind acts. And I'm telling you, I leave there inspired and I come here and I'm like, we're going to do this at Central Office, or we're going to do this at Central Office. And you inspire everyone around you, which is why you're here, to spread your message, and then we'll spread more kindness. So we have a couple of gifts for you as well.
Bye. Thank you. Yeah, waving at you. Okay, that, yeah. I walked out there and I waved at everybody. I remember seeing her.
You've seen her?
Yeah. You kids. Empty there now. All right, that was great. I have to say, and I wish they were still here to hear our comments about them, but I'm, it's impressive that they were able to get up and speak on the microphone. I know how terrifying that can be because it's a little nerve wracking when people are staring at you for a few hours. So I commend them for getting up and being brave and talking about their kindness campaign. So that was really great. Of course, we lost most of our audience, but that's okay. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Yeah. All right, so that will take us to Board Member Comments. Bill, you want to start tonight?
Sure. Lots of cool things that happened recently, and I'm going to save many of those for you guys. But one of the things we got to do is tour the Early Learning Center, which is just such a great facility and unbelievable group of educators there. We got to sit in on, I believe it's Mrs. Rossin's class, who is a specialist. And we watched her work with a classroom and also a group of students from the DLC Developmental Learning Center. Those are some very impacted students. And it was just so amazing to watch her and the paraeducators that worked with her. The energy that everybody had in the room was excellent. There was movement, there was music, there was tactile activities, there was routines that the kids did. And the teachers and paras working with each and every student and that. And it was just so fun to see the kids in that environment and working. And I got to tell you, there's a lot of work that goes into those lesson plans for the group of kids. And it was just fun to watch. And then the next group was upstairs and stations. And it was so fun to see the kids, kind of culmination of what they've been learning along the way. But more fun was when they maybe got a little excited and got out of routine and how quickly she was able to just calmly, quietly get them right back to it. And even though she tried to explain to us afterwards, we met and debriefed, that she's a little bit mean, I think there's a lot of love there. And it was just so fun to watch that activity. So thank you for the opportunity to go see that and and great stuff going on over there.
Awesome. Thanks, Bill. Erin?
Well, I dressed up as an elephant. It's not something I've ever said at a board meeting before, but along with many of you, I got to wear the inflatable elephant costume. Oftentimes, I can't do some of the things that are done during the week. And so I was so grateful to be able to go into a few of our schools along with Bill and Adam. Thank you for touring us around. We said, I don't know that we'd laughed that hard in a while. So it was pretty amusing getting those things on and off in a van and waddling into schools. And honestly, the teacher in me was a little nervous about being a disruption, but we were so warmly welcomed and everyone was so kind. And it was just kind of a silly, but also meaningful way to connect with people in our schools. And I just so, so value that. So thank you for organizing it, giving us the opportunity to do that. But we delivered some kindness banners and it was lovely. So I'm sure there are other things you guys will talk about as well, but that was my main highlight.
Nice. Yeah, definitely some good memories. JB, you have anything?
Yes. All right. I would like to start by welcoming Jean. Jean is a member of, is a member of our community. And he reached out to me during my campaign and was a very interested and thoughtful constituent. And he was looking at ways to learn more. And I invited him to a board meeting because I thought that would be a good way to learn more. And I inadvertently invited him to a board meeting on November 11th, which we did not have. So Jean did come on the 11th and I did get a phone call that, where is everybody? Lights are out and doors are locked. So he was kind enough to come again. And I just want to say that this, you know, having the opportunity to meet someone like Jean was one of the best parts about the experience of kind of the election. Some, because I think we are, yeah, there's, to have somebody who cares and is interested and wants to learn more and then follows up on it is really, really meaningful. So I want to thank you for being here. Yes.
Seriously, I'm caring.
Oh, so, yeah. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Can we talk about it afterward?
Yeah. Sorry, sorry. I didn't mean to.
The agenda we have to save. Yeah, sorry.
Sorry.
We had to follow.
My bad. But I just wanted to say thank you and I hope we see you again. So some of the, oh, one of the big events, there was kind of a lot that went on, but one of the really, I also want to say, I want to shout out to Scoop 320. These came out. And a big shout out to Elle because my little corner of zip code was not getting these and I don't get them. And I'm so happy because there's so much great information and it's great information for all the people that live around me. So thank you, Elle, for making that happen. And visited, we had the opportunity to go to the State of the District, which was, for those who don't know, it's kind of the year in review and an opportunity to really shine and be transparent about what's going on, good, bad, all the different things. And one of the things I wanted to, there's so much that I could say about that, but the one thing I really want to point out, and we saw it again here, is that there are so many opportunities to create opportunities for kids to learn. And so when, go to the State of the District, and there are people, there are, there are representatives, our city representatives, council members, the mayor, the sheriff, there are regional Pierce County representatives, and we have students that are presenting. They're learning how to stand up in front of an audience and present to them. They're learning how to perform in front of an audience. Takes a lot of courage to do those things and they're getting those opportunities. These little fourth and fifth graders did that today to stand up there and talk about something that's really important to them. And so I really applaud that many of the things we do, we make sure that it's about the kids and the kids are leading and they're learning from that. And I really appreciate that. And that's what I took from that. And then I also just wanted to say, piggybacking on the Early Learning Center experience, one of the most impressive things that I took away from that is the way that our specialist integrates her her lesson plans with the lesson plans of those students. I had a class in college and I was a science major, but one of my favorite classes was an art history class because I also had a writing class with it. So two things I don't normally like. But it was the ability to learn the same material from two different perspectives and to see these students have the opportunity to learn material from their classroom teachers and then have that reinforced in music or in PE or in STEM in different ways. They're going to walk away really understanding that material. And I thought that was just, it's brilliant that we had that opportunity. And we are also incredibly lucky in this district to have a facility like that for our little learners. It's fantastic facility. So thank you to our community for letting us have that.
A lot of good stuff. I enjoyed you doing all of you this past month, doing so much together. I also for the kindness campaign volunteered to take cupcakes out from Wanna Cupcake. They're all nicely decorated and stuff. I took those to the transportation department and they loved them. And then went to Eli Hill and they were thrilled. Went through the schools, classrooms, rooms there. And today I received a very nice card from all them. So it was really nice. Appreciate it. I was glad to do it, but nice to get this back. And I also went to the play this at Sumner High School and Green Gables. Now I've been to a number of plays. This really was good. A little heartwarming to watch the whole thing. Did a great job. Beautiful play, beautiful presentation on the stuff. So I'm really glad I went there. Awesome. And of course, I went to Community for Families and talked a lot of things for Christmas coming up. We also had a great presentation from Good Roots from Kerry Friedman, talking about what they're doing with the Good Roots, how they're going to the new facilities in East Town out there. And actually, an opportunity yesterday to see inside their building, what they're building. So they've got huge coolers, freezing it out there. It's going to be an amazing facility once they get all put together. Right now they're working out two different locations, but by the first year, it should be all in one spot there. So they're taking care of so many people in our community. They've got, as a quick note, they have the most people, as you may have heard, out of Bonnie Lake, 2,000 people. It's on the parade of bodies, isn't it? 2,000 people just in Bonnie Lake, along at 2,241 in Bonnie Lake they're servicing. They have Buckley 765, Carboneta 101, Lake Taps 241, Orning 294, P.O.A. 482, and Sumner 251. And this list keeps growing because the need is really out there. So I'm glad they're doing this and they have a real challenge trying to keep up with it. And I also went to Sumner Middle School and Maple Lawn Elementary. Such amazing schools we have. They're so outwarming to see what they're doing, how the kids like to show me what their projects are working on and stuff. And everyone is really, those are great schools. And I'm really enjoying all the schools, how they're doing different things to help keep the kids engaged. It was a wonderful time. So I really appreciate all they've done and letting me go through the schools that way. And of course, I give them both those little kind hearts. Every school I go to, they give little kind hearts, carbon. So it's basically good that way. So it's been a busy month, you know, we've been doing together and individually. Hopefully, spread the word that way.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, I think the highlight for me, not just the wearing of the elephant costume, was definitely a highlight and the kids were very excited about that. But you know, the State of the District breakfast, having all those people from the community show up to hear what we have going on and all the support staff that put that on and made that a success. And then, of course, our keynote speaker, Dr. Dent, who gives an amazing presentation. The things about her presentation are not only informative, but they draw the community in and also give them something that they can look towards participation in the future and more giving back. So great job. Thank you for that. All right. We will get into, do we have any audience comments tonight?
We do not have any audience comments this evening.
Right, that gets us into our business matters that we're going to take action on. Our first action item is the approval of the school calendars for 26, 27, and 2028. The school year calendars, as negotiated with the Sumner Bonnie Lake Education Association, Sumner Paraeducator Association, and the Classified Administrative Professional Association. For the 26, 27, and 27, 28 school years, the district administration recommends the board adopt the 26, 27, 27, 28 school year calendars. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion about the calendars? I didn't think so. All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, our next action item is Resolution 0525-26, Out of Endorsement Assignment Waiver. The administration recommends the board adopt this resolution out of district, out of endorsement assignment waiver. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks. Any discussion?
I just know that, I mean, this is a topic that comes up every year. And I know that the district works exceptionally hard to to try to get 100% of teachers in endorsed areas. And when you're working, especially at the high schools and that, you have a one class here, one class there, it's virtually impossible from my perspective. But I also know how hard those teachers work that are out of, out of their endorsed areas to make it quality education. So I want to thank them. That's a lot of work.
Yeah, for sure. It's wonderful that they step up and help fill that need. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, our next action item is Resolution Number 0725-26, Certification of the 2026 Excess Property Taxes. District Administration recommends that Sumner Bonnie Lake School District Board of Directors adopt this resolution, Certification of 2026 Excess Property Taxes, which certifies to the Pierce County Council and the Superintendent of Puget Sound ESD the amount of excess property taxes to be levied in 2025 and collected in 2026. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Awesome. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, we have more, more action items. All right, so we've got Resolution Number 0825-26, Executive Agreement between Sumner Bonnie Lake and General Contractor Construction Manager of the Sumner High School Phase Two Project. The district administration recommends that the Sumner Bonnie Lake School Board of Directors adopt this resolution, approving the superintendent to execute the agreement between Sumner Bonnie Lake School District and the Skanska and Skanska as the General Contractor Construction Manager of the Sumner High School Phase Two Projects. Do I have a motion? Have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Just for those listening at home, a lot of these, this action item has to do with the bond passing and the beginning of getting contractors in place so we can start putting shovels in the ground. So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, our next item that has to do with the bond is the general conditions of contract for construction. The district administration recommends that the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District Board of Directors approve Skanska Agreement Number A133-2019 with the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District for General Contractor Construction Manager of the Sumner High School Phase Two Project. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Oh, second. Awesome. Any discussion? Alright, another exciting one to see some action starting on. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright, motion passes. Oh, you're not letting me off the hook easy, are you? Alright, general conditions, action item, general conditions of contractor for construction. The district administration recommends that the Sumner Bonnie Lake School Board of Directors approve construction agreement number A two zero one dash two zero one seven between Bonnie Lake School District and Skanska for the Sumner High School Phase Two Project. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Awesome. Any discussion? Alright, another step closer to shovels in the ground. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright, motion passes. Alright, our next action item. Resolution number zero nine slash two five dash two six. Executive agreement between Sumner Bonnie Lake and General Contractor Construction Manager for Bonnie Lake High School Expansion Project. The district administration recommends that Sumner Bonnie Lake School District Board of Directors adopt resolution number zero nine slash two five dash two six proving the superintendent to execute the agreement between Sumner Bonnie Lake School District and Corsmo Construction as the general contractor and construction manager for the Bonnie Lake Expansion Project. Do I have a motion?
I have a comment.
One, one second. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Thank you. The video we saw this week of the new high school was amazing.
Yeah.
You really dreamed the delight. So this is, I mean, great what we're doing here. I look forward to this being done. So thank you for sharing it with all of us.
Yeah, I, I agree. That was really a cool video to see what it's going to look like and not only action being taken on Sumner High School, but action being taken on Bonnie Lake High School. So it's really exciting. Any other comments? Alright. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright, motion passes. Alright, our next one for Bonnie, for Bonnie Lake High School is a standard form of agreement with Corsmo Construction. The district administration recommends that the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District Board of Directors approve Corsmo Construction Agreement number A one three three dash two zero one nine with Sumner Bonnie Lake School District for General Contractor Construction Manager for the Bonnie Lake High School Expansion. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Alright, another step closer to shovels in the ground. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright, motion passes. Okay, last one on this section is general conditions of contract for construction. District administration recommends that Sumner Bonnie Lake Board of Directors approve construction agreement number A two zero one dash two zero one seven between Bonnie Lake School District and Corsmo Construction for the Bonnie Lake High School Expansion. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Alright, seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Alright, motion passes. Alright, that's all the construction items. Now we're going to do some policy matters. So in accordance with policy thirteen ten, adoption and amendment of policies and bylaws, the following policies are included for adoption. District administration recommends the board adopt the following district policies in accordance with policy thirteen ten, adoption, amendment of policies and bylaws. We have policy three one one six, students in foster care. Uh, we have policy three one four three, notification and dissemination of information. We have policy number three two two six, interviews and interrogations. We have policy number thirty-two forty-one, student discipline. We have policy fifty-two sixty, personal records. That's it on that. Okay. Uh, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? Nope. Um, I want to just comment that I think some of these policies are pretty awesome. Why they protect, some of them protect foster care kids. Uh, some of them talk about, um, information that we can receive about blinking suit, student safety plans. Um, and it covers a lot of other good stuff that, uh, keeps our kids safe and stuff, uh, doing all the great things. So, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright, motion passes. Okay. Next on the board policy list for information only. In accordance with policy thirteen ten, adoption and amendment of policies and bylaws, the following policies are included for first reading. Policy number one zero zero five, policy number one 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 one, policy number one two one zero, policy number one eight one five, policy number one eight two five, policy one three one zero, policy number one six three zero, policy number one eight two zero, policy number one eight two one, policy number two zero two zero, policy number two one seven zero, policy number two four two zero, policy number three one three one, policy number three two one zero, policy number three four two four, policy number three four two five, policy number three four two seven, policy number four one two zero, policy number four two six zero, policy number five zero 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 and policy number five zero one zero. Policy committee's been busy. Uh, that also for information only, in accordance with policy thirteen ten, adoption and amendment of policies and bylaws, the following procedures are included for information only. Policy number two zero two zero, policy number two zero two one, policy number two four two zero. Or procedures. Check out my words mixed up. Let me start over. In accordance with policy thirteen ten, adoption, amendment of policies and bylaws, the following procedures are included for information only. Procedure two zero two zero, procedure two zero two one, procedure two four two zero, procedure three two one zero, procedure three four one six, procedure three four two four, procedure three four two seven, procedure four one two zero, procedure four two six zero, procedure five zero zero zero. I'm not done. There's more.
I'm impressed.
Okay. And with all of those policy changes, for information only with these policy and procedure changes comes, uh, retired policies and procedures. In accordance with policy thirteen ten, adoption, amendment of policies and bylaws, the following procedures and policies have been included for information. Number zero one zero zero, number zero three zero zero, number zero five zero zero, number zero seven zero zero, number three one three zero, procedure three one three zero, number three four two eight and procedure three four two eight. So that was a lot. Thank you. Alright. The next item on our agenda is for information only as well. Uh, we have an alternative learning experience and online learning. Kelly Dent, Assistant Superintendent and Instructional Services is providing information on the twenty-five, twenty-six alternative learning experience, ALE, and the online learning programs. You'll find that in your packet. Um, one of the things that I noticed in there was just the phenomenal increase in performance that these, uh, services are providing our students. Um, the passing rates have jumped up to the ninety-four to ninety-six percentile, which is amazing. These are the students that without these, these supports would fall through the cracks. And I want to say thank you to Kelly Dent and her staff for doing such a great job in supporting those students. The other information only is Strong Minds Kind Hearts update. Dr. Lori Dent, District Superintendent, is providing an update on Strong Minds Kind Hearts to the Board of Directors. Is there anything we missed on that tonight?
Yeah, so every once in a while, I just want to make sure that we keep this in front as a way to amplify and, uh, really strengthen our promise to know value and support all of our kids. Um, you know, kindness isn't complicated. It's shared. Especially when we come together, uh, in the same spirit, the collective spirit, um, to spread kindness. And we saw that tonight. And I just want to put things in this report that remind you of the greatness that's going on in this district because of our emphasis on kindness. Um, and every month we come together as a leadership team and we just kind of like compile all of the great things that are going on and it's just important for you to know, um, because again, we appreciate your support in allowing us to do this work. Um, and you're right, the elephant costumes are silly and fun. Um, but they also convey the message in another way. So thank you for your willingness to put on the costume. You did it. It was awesome. So thank you.
Alright, and that leads us to board discussion.
I just wanted to say one thing on the kindness thing. Um, one, um, one of the things that I think when you brought this up, that your hopes were that it would trickle into the community. And, um, to just today on, um, I, I saw a friend of mine who has nothing to do with the school district, but picked up their cup of coffee at Starbucks and posted on, you know, social media, the cute little sleeve that had kindness that the daffodil students had written. And so I'm like, you know, had no idea, they're not part of the commu, the school district. They don't know about our kindness campaign. But clearly this is something that touched them and they posted about it. So you know, it's going to, you know, the comments were like, you know, again, it touched many, many people. So it's working. It's trickling out. It's impacting people, um, beyond the, beyond the school walls. And, um, I guess the one thing I want to make sure of is that are there any areas within the district that, um, maybe need more support to, to get boosted up? And we can see like Bonnie Lake Elementary is all in. And I think when we went on our tour, it felt like everybody was all in. But are there places that we can help to, to?
Sounds like you want to wear the elephant costume more.
I mean, it was the closest I'll ever be to being a rock star, walking through the lunchroom in an elephant costume. Um, but just if there are, please let us know. Cause, um, you know, or let me know definitely to make sure that happens.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. That's great. Any other boards?
Yeah. Dr. Dent said, Tom, you're going to wear an elephant costume. I said, no. You really want to do that? No. You should. And I'm glad I did. It was wonderful seeing those kids, the schools, what a difference it made having us go and make impact we, we made on them. I'm sure they took home their families and stuff. It was a lot of fun. I really enjoyed it. I'm glad we did that. And this week, all of you are going to Wasamis and I won't be there, but I'm going to do what I always do every year. I'm gonna serve dinners to seniors on Thursday and Friday, Thanksgiving meals. On Saturday, I'm going to deliver meals to people in our communities where they have meals for Thanksgiving. That does my heart good and that's what makes me joy for me also. So I'm sorry I won't be with you, but I'll do a little part here in this, the whole area here in the community.
I don't think you have anything to apologize for. We really appreciate the fact that, you know, we can kind of, all of us can be in both places at once and obligations here, but then having you be able to, to support the community and be out there and do those things is really appreciated by all of us, I think.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other board discussion?
You know, there's so many cool things that are going on and coming up in the next month or so. Um, but there's also a group of, of adults and kids who really are coming up on really the most difficult time for them because, uh, their families may not have what others do. Um, they may have lost loved ones during this time period. They've, there's just a lot of things, even to the point where, um, there are some kids that coming to school every day is a highlight for them. And they're not going to have that because schools are closed and, and their schedules and such. And I know there is so many people in the district, um, that do things to help people through this time period, but it's all, also just one of those things that I really every year when I'm associated with the district or districts I've been associated with really communicate out. Jeanie Larburg was kind of my partner in crime as we sent out messages and that, that these are really, really tough times for some people. And, um, the more that we can put our arms around them and love them, that's, that's really needed. So, thank you.
Awesome. Alright. Thank you, Bill. Any other comments or board discussion announcements or anything? Alright. We'll do, maybe do a board meeting in the elephant costumes, right? Wow. This is serious business. We gotta, you gotta be serious. Alright. Okay, so that brings us to our announcement of our next regular board meeting. A board meeting has been scheduled for Tuesday, December sixteenth and will begin at six PM in the central board office. We are adjourned. Thank you.